Good evening and welcome to the May 17, 2023 City Council on Housing Successor Meeting. We'll call the meeting to order and I ask the clerk to call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi, Councilmember Albert, Councilmember Mendoza, Councilmember Rakucci, and Mayor Haldishell.
Thank you very much. Oh, here. I will ask Ellen, Emily, Emily. You're Elizabeth, you're Emily. Emily, would you lead us in the pledge?
I'll up to the podium.
Emily, could you come to the podium?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Right, and I want to ask our clerk to announce the meeting procedures.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 17, City of Roseville City Council Housing Successor Meeting. If you're present here tonight and have not already picked up an agenda, they are available at the end of the staff table to your right. If anyone in the audience is here for item 10.1, a public hearing on the Amaruso Community Facilities District 123, that item will actually be continued to the June 21 City Council meeting. As a reminder, the Brown Act prohibits the City Council from taking action or discussing items that are not listed on tonight's agenda. For public comments, each speaker will be provided with three minutes at the podium on non-agenda items. The maximum allotted time for this particular section is 25 minutes. Speakers that would like to comment on items appearing on tonight's agendas will have five minutes to express their comments and concerns to the City Council. Time will be monitored, and once the red light begins to flash at the podium, we request that the speaker please conclude their comments. Lastly, if you address the City Council tonight, please consider stating your name for the record. Thank you very much for your civic participation and joining us here at the City of Roseville. Welcome.
Thank you very much. We'll start our evening with presentations, and the first presentation is a proclamation of National Police Week. Chief Berks, would you come to the podium, and we're gonna do it from here. And I don't know who has card number one, so Scott, take us, lead us off.
Hey, Chief. Whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15 as National Peace Officers' Day, and the calendar week in which May 15 falls was established as National Police Week, which pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others, and?
Whereas there are approximately 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including 152 dedicated members of the Roseville Police Department, and?
Whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 23,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty, and?
Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. New names of our fallen officers are added each spring in conjunction with the National Police Week, and?
And whereas on Panel 34 West, Row 20 of the National Memorial is carved the name of Roseville Police Officer Mark White, who died in the line of duty on February 10, 1995. This past week, members of the Roseville Police Department Honor Guard were present in Washington, DC, with Officer White's family remembering his service to our community. And now therefore, now therefore, I, Bruce Haddishell, on behalf of my colleagues on the Roseville City Council, do hereby proclaim May 14 through 20, 2023, as National Police Week and publicly salute the service of Roseville law enforcement officers and officers in the community across the nation. Chief, if you'd like to share some words about yours and the Honor Guard's journey this week?
Yes, sir. So I appreciate the proclamation on our Police Week. As you mentioned, myself, Lieutenant B., as well as several members of our Police Department Honor Guard attended National Police Memorial. In fact, we got back at about 1:00 in the morning last night, so if I look tired, I'm still trying to figure out what time zone I'm in. But we spent the week not only attending the Police Memorial Weeks, a candlelight vigil on the Capitol Mall, as well as Police Memorial Day in front of the Capitol, and attended a variety of other events with close to 25,000 police officers from around the world that come to Washington, DC for this week. Most importantly, we spent most of this week with Liz White and with her daughter Whitney. It's been 28 years since we lost Mark, and it is our solemn duty to make sure we're there every time that Liz needs us, and that includes every May we go to Washington, DC to spend some time with her. And so this proclamation is actually going to get mailed to her tomorrow so that she can have it. So we definitely appreciate it and you recognizing our officers in our department.
Right. I didn't orchestrate this well, but can we get a photo? Let's all go down and join our chief and get him a proclamation and then call on Ryan DeVore to... He's the photo guy now.
No, I'm good, man.
Yeah, I trust you, but I never get the photo. There's a long meeting, so I'm gonna save some steps here. I'm not gonna leave down here. I would like Elizabeth Klein, it is Klein, right? Louis McGeorge. And all you crafty people over there, you little homebrewers. Want to, you know, this is, so in my day job, you know, in Sacramento Valley Agriculture, one of my colleagues said, hey, you know, and they're from up in the Chico area, they said, "It's American Craft Beer Week." I said, "I know a craft brewer that I really like." I know several that I really like, let's be fair and honest. So I said, "We're gonna do a proclamation, so." Whereas Craft Beer Week is a time to enjoy not only craft beer, but also the hospitality of Roseville's breweries, all while benefiting these small businesses. And whereas Roseville recognizes the considerable contributions of Roseville's brewers, distributors, and retailers of craft beer and their continuous improvement of the craft beer culture and the community as a whole. And whereas the craft breweries in Roseville contribute to the economic and cultural enhancement of the community through employment of local residents in support of local activities, while also promoting Roseville through distribution of locally brewed beer, big gem denios. And whereas one of the first brewers in Roseville, the Monks Cellar, has produced many award-winning beers, most recently earning four medals at the 2022 California Commercial Craft Competition and placing third for Brewery of the Year in one of the largest competitions in California. Now therefore, I, now therefore, I, Bruce Haddishell, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim May 15 through the 21st, 2023, as Craft Beer Week and celebrate the success of our growing craft brewery scene. So now it's the photo op time. You want to come up? Yep, you know, gotta get Elizabeth. Please take a photo. All right, taking the photo. Can I trust you? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Could you tell us who is also in your row there?
And your origins here in Roseville, really quickly? Sure, we have some support. I didn't even know you guys were coming, but we, since the beginning of Monks, obviously, community is very important to us. I started brewing beer in my parents' basement on Eldorado Street here in Roseville when I was just out of college. But homebrewing is always very important to me, but these are representatives of the Placer Ultimate Brewing Society. And they're a homebrew club here in Placer County who spread the gospel and help people make great beer.
And you do a lot of collaborations with other brewers in the region?
Here tonight because we're gonna go over to Monks and taste a beer that we did.
Okay, we're gonna try to adjourn early and join you. But no, I really appreciate it and, you know.
Thank you for the support.
Now, you know, thank you, right, you know. You've always been so supportive of many, many activities here, and, you know, it's been, it's my pleasure to learn. You know, you're a third or fourth generation here in Roseville, and, you know, your partner Paul and others. So thank you very much for all your contributions to making Vernon Street what it is.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, next, we're at the point in our agenda, and I asked the clerk to announce the consent. We're here to talk about, announce for public comment on non-agenda items, so if you want to, you want to read? We'll just read, we'll just invite Lauren Meek Harris. I know Lauren Meek Harris. Come on, Lauren.
Good evening. I know you guys have a long meeting, so. Well, I've unofficially become the, what do they call it, neighborhood spokes kind of person for my block, apparently. So I'm here on behalf of my corner of Central Roseville. I live off of Porter and Junction. And we've been watching the traffic. One of my neighbors unofficially has already called the police, and currently there is in the works, there is a study, supposedly. I live not too far from the Kaysburg Elementary School, as well as the park. I work usually from home a few days a week. I actually have walked to the park and back to my house, and I've almost been hit myself. There's children, there's people, disabled people, and there's individuals that are are in need of assistance, and it's not that we don't like the traffic going through, just be mindful of your speed limit. I would hate to have that we end up having speed bumps in area. That's not an attractive look. And I know people resent them, but I guess there's a reason for them. But just be mindful, especially when you go by elementary school or park. Or if you happen to see me walking, just like drive slowly. But thank you for the time, and I know my neighbors have actually, on that side, because I realize that Porter runs quite a ways, it's a longer street in Roseville. But on ours, on my side, because of the school and elementary school, we're just asking to be mindful. And my neighbors have already taken action without me. I'm not looking to be part of the action, but I am trying to do is give the public a fair warning before they have to go into further action. And I don't, and I would not like to see somebody killed, you know, or harmed, so thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Anyone else who has a public comment on non-agenda items?
Good evening. My name is David Zwirling. I've lived in Los Rios for the last eight years. I'd like to discuss the traffic situation around Woodbridge Elementary School tonight at the corner of Stanford Avenue and Niles. For the past three years, the school has implemented a system which seems to require in-person parental drop-off and pickup. This is understandable. The COVID emergency has certainly changed many things about daily life. One of the places where students are loaded and unloaded is in the middle of the block at Stanford, directly across the street from my house. During drop-off and pickup times, the road is a safety hazard. Waiting cars line the street from the middle of the block down to Alefa, about a block and a half. These cars are not legally parked and just idle in the traffic lane, making it impossible to turn onto Niles from Alefa. The school handicap parking spaces here are also almost always blocked as well. To drive westbound on Stanford, vehicles must drive in the oncoming traffic lane. This includes RCSD buses. Unsurprisingly, this is a two-way street in a neighborhood where people live, and it's also often needed that people need to leave their residences to go to work, including my wife. She has nearly been hit a couple times a week, driving in the oncoming lane because of these oncoming traffic. The south side of Stanford also has a parking permit restriction which is violated on a daily basis. This has always been a problem, but the number of people wishing to park their cars on the south side of the street now often exceeds the number of spots. This leads to my and my neighbor's driveways being blocked on a daily basis. If I arrive at my house between 12:30 and 2:00, my driveway is almost always blocked. When I and my neighbor park and exit, our vehicles, we have been shouted at, disparaged, flipped off, you name it. Parked cars in the middle of the street at a de facto crossing zone with obscurities on both sides, obscuration on both sides causes cars driving illegally in the oncoming traffic lane to have a limited field of view and presents a risk of pedestrian accidents. If the school intends to continue the policy, they should at least have someone capable of enforcing safety in the area. Over the past few weeks, I've submitted, I have attempted to make parking enforcement aware of this issue by reporting violations between, using the Submit a Traffic Concern parking website. After multiple weeks, I have yet to hear back. I have also called. I asked the council to encourage parking enforcement to enforce parking regulations. And to any RCSD officials in attendance tonight, I encourage you to help Woodbridge be a better neighbor and help them demonstrate kindness to their students. I understand that COVID has changed things, but those things are getting out of hand with COVID restrictions being lifted, especially the federal emergency, for example. It is time for the school to return to the policies that worked fine beforehand. I moved to Los Rios because I love the neighborhood. It's very walkable, it's nice. I encourage anyone with a student to also discover the charm of walking in my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, and if you give your, talk to our city manager right there?
Is this your contact information also?
It does not, but I can...
I'll tell you what, instead of disrupting the whole meeting, Ryan DeVore can hook up with you right down there, and he'll get you a contact.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. Anybody else have a comment on non-agenda items? We'll now next move and I'll ask the clerk to announce the procedures for approving the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On consent calendar, all matters on the consent are considered routine in nature and will be approved by one motion of the City Council. There will be no discussion on consent calendar items unless a member of the City Council, the staff, or a member of the public requests that a specific item be pulled for further discussion. At this time, neither council or staff has made such request. Is there any member in the audience that would like to pull an item for further discussion tonight? Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, the City Council will consider the consent calendar items 7.1 through 7.23. At this time, may I have a motion to approve the items?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi, Councilmember Albert, Councilmember Mendoza,
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci,
Yes.
and Mayor Haldishell.
Yes, thank you very much. All right, well, next, move to resolutions and item 8.1, Opposition to State Ballot Initiative 21-0042A1, Measure Restricting Voters' Input and Local Taxing Authority. I ask Mark Walensky to make a staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Haldishell and councilmembers. I'm Mark Walensky, the government, the city's government relations administrator. And I'm presenting, the item I'm presenting tonight is an overview of the California Business Roundtable Anti-Local Control Measure that is qualified for the November 2024 ballot. Staff requests the City Council's consideration to adopt a resolution explaining how harmful this measure would be to Roseville and other communities throughout California. Recently, the California Business Roundtable's Anti-Local Control Measure qualified for the November 2024 ballot. The measure includes provisions that would make it more difficult for local voters to pass measures needed to fund local services and projects. The measure jeopardizes vital local and state services and puts at risk billions of dollars currently dedicated to critical state and local services. If passed, it could force cuts to services such as fire and emergency response, law enforcement, public health, parks, libraries, and other important municipal programs and services. Furthermore, it is extremely concerning that the measure includes a provision that would retroactively cancel measures that were passed by local voters in 2022, thereby effectively undermining the rights of voters to decide the needs of their communities. By way of background, a recent analysis of the initiative by California City Finance, an organization that provides data, statistics, and analysis of California city and county finances, found that the retroactive provision defined in the initiative would jeopardize over 100 local measures that were approved in 2022 and would therefore likely not comply with the provisions of the initiative. In addition, voters approved 106 measures between June 2022 and November 2022 that do not provide a specific end date. The results of this means that they will expire a year after the effective date of the initiative if the initiative passes. Taken together, these approved local measures generate nearly $561 million per year in the communities where they were passed. An immediate, at immediate risk is, in Roseville, is Measure C that was approved by 72% of voters and is anticipated to generate an additional $3 million annually by raising the hotel tax paid by people who stay in hotels in short-term rentals in the city limits. The city's hotel and lodging tax had remained unchanged at 6% for 47 years, while demand for city services, including from visitors, has increased along with the number of hotels from 4 to 17. The city may use these revenues for any general unrestricted municipal purpose, including but not limited to essential services such as 911 emergency response, repairing potholes in streets, neighborhood police patrols, fire protection, addressing blight, maintaining existing and future city amenities, economic development, and job creation, and, and other general government services. In addition, hotel and lodging tax generated in the city of Roseville stays in Roseville and cannot be taken by the state of California or the federal government. Other significant changes within the initiative include state taxes, all new or increased state taxes will require majority voter approval, local taxes, new requirements for voter approval such as when an existing tax is applied to a newly annexed territory. All new or increased taxes adopted after January 1, 2022 must include a sunset date. With respect to fees and charges, fees and charges for services and permits may not exceed the actual cost of providing the product or service for which the fee is charged. Actual cost is the minimum amount necessary. State and cities have burden of providing by clear and convincing evidence that a fee or a charge is not a tax, that the amount is reasonable, and that it does not exceed the actual cost. And with respect to fines and penalties, it may require voter approval of fines, that fines and penalties... that fines and penalties for corporations and property owners that violate state and local laws unless a new undefined adjudicatory process is used to impose the fines and penalties. Examples of this include nuisance abatement, organic waste reduction requirements, and failure to maintain a vacant property. So, in conclusion, this far-reaching measure puts at risk billions of dollars currently dedicated to critical state and local services. The initiative limits voters' authority, adopts new and stricter rules for raising taxes and fees, and may make it, may make it more difficult to hold violators of state and local laws accountable. Ultimately, the measure severely restricts voters' input and diminishes local taxing authority and the ability of voters to determine what is best and necessary for their communities. This concludes my presentation, and staff requests the city council's consideration to adopt a resolution explaining how harmful this measure would be to Roseville and other communities throughout the state. Thank you, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Walensky, for your presentation. Councilwoman Mendonza, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you, Mark.
Councilwoman Rakuchi, any questions?
Not at this time.
Councilmember Albert.
No questions, just comments.
Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
No questions.
I have one question. If we could go back two slides? Maybe go forward one slide? It was under the, yeah, under the fees and charges, that second bullet point. No fee or charge or exaction regulating vehicle miles traveled can be imposed on due development. Now, we, through regional plant, transportation planning, charge fees for the improvement of our roadway system, both local roads and Highway 65. That would put at risk our ability to do that and therefore create untenable traffic conditions. Is that, is that how I, is that a fair way to read that?
That's a fair, that's a fair interpretation.
Thanks. I'll open it for public comment. Seeing no public comment, I'll close public comment. If there aren't any additional questions or comments?
Comment? Yeah.
Go ahead, Councilmember Albert.
Reading through this, this just became so infuriating that a tax group would, would go this extreme. I understand being conservative, trying to, you know, protect people's taxes, but this is actually going to damage the quality of life of our communities, and this is just such a horrible idea. I'm just shocked that, that it would even get this far. So, I'm fully supportive of this, of us opposing this. This is just so bad.
Any other public comment?
My comment for me is, it's a matter of local decision-making. And so, you know, our community needs to make, be able to make decisions. The councils need to make decisions. And I really don't like anything that's retroactive. I, half that ends up in courts and figuring out if they can really even do that. But the things that not only our city is approved, but, and the voters approve, but other cities, trying to undo things that have already occurred.
Yeah.
It's a bad way to do government.
Yeah.
I'm going to associate my comments with Councilwoman Rakuchi because, yes, the voters have spoken, and the voters have said, for our quality of life, this is what we want. We are not willy-nilly looking to tax our business community. But they see a value often, and so does our community. So, you know, that's why I'm going to support your recommendation to oppose this or send a resolution. So, with that, I'll ask the clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 8.1, the city council will consider adopting Resolution Number 23-166, opposing State Ballot Initiative 21-0042A1. At this time, may I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start a roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldishel.
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Walensky, for your presentation. Next up is item 8.2, the Long Meadow Parkside Community Facilities District Number 1 Bond Refunding. Good evening, Mr. Kaufman.
Good evening, Mayor Haldishel and council members. My name is Dennis Kaufman, Assistant City Manager and Chief Financial Officer. And the purpose of this agenda item is to recommend authorizing refunding bonds to refinance existing bonds for this community facilities district. For background purposes, the city establishes CFDs to create a land-secured financing tool to fund acquisition or construction of authorized facilities. In this particular district, Long Meadow Parkside, the district was formed back in 2005 and issued its first-ish series of bonds in that year. Those initial bonds were refunded or refinanced in 2013, and it's been 10 years. And now those bonds are eligible to be refinanced, and so staff are recommending to refund or refinance those bonds to achieve a savings equivalent to about a 5% present value savings, which is consistent with the city's debt management policy. We try to achieve at least a 5% savings when we do these refinancings. Would not change the term of the bonds. We would not be extending out the maturities of the bonds. And the way we've structured this recommended refinance would provide some additional money upfront for some additional improvements within this particular district. The authorized facilities for this district include transportation improvements, utility improvements, as well as park and streetscape improvements. The district is comprised of two different single-family residential subdivisions. One identified as Long Meadow at Crocker Ranch, near the top of this map highlighted in yellow. And the second one is Parkside Estates, which is at the bottom of the map in yellow. They're about three miles apart. And the facilities that we're looking at using the, some of the savings to pay for includes improvements at Ricky Park as well as some streetscape planting and irrigation upgrades along Wood Creek West. So, the staff recommendation tonight is to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of these refunding bonds on behalf of the Long Meadow Parkside Community Facilities District Number 1, including approving and directing the execution of a variety of documents, including the preliminary official statement, which is the document that we use to market the bonds. And this concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions.
Ask Councilman Albert, do you have any questions?
Questions.
Vice Mayor Bernusconi, any questions? Councilwoman Rakuchi, any questions?
No, not at this time.
Councilmember Mendonza, any questions?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Can I ask our city attorney a question?
Yep.
And I apologize in advance for not ask, not asking you this in advance, but we just heard a presentation from Mr. Walensky. Would, is there a potential for that measure to reach down to something that's bond-financed?
I think in the way that current draft of the last proposed law is worded, it wouldn't reach to the bond financing. I think that's mostly focused on measures, voter measures and taxing measures. Bonds are a slightly different financial tool than that. So, I think the answer based on the current draft of it would be no to that, unlikely, I should say.
Because they're paid by fees and charges.
And there's a very different structure, financing structure centered around the bonds.
Thank you very much. All right. I'll open it up for public comment. I'll close public comment, inquire if there are any additional questions to the council. Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to read the motion.
Mr. Mayor, on item 8.2, the city council will consider adopting Resolution Number 23-179, a resolution authorizing the issuance of special tax refunding bonds for and on behalf of the city of Roseville, Long Meadow Parkside Community Facilities District Number 1, otherwise known as Public Facilities, approving and directing the execution of a fiscal agent agreement, approving the form of preliminary official statement, approving the sale of such bonds pursuant to the bond purchase agreement, and approving other related documents and actions. May I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start a roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert. Councilmember Mendonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldishel.
Thank you for your presentation, and if you'll stay right there. I think you're next up with our financial policies for fiscal year 2023 and 2024.
Thank you very much, Mayor. We bring forward the city's financial policies documented each year for the city council to review and approve. The purpose of the city's financial policies is really to institutionalize and document good financial management practices that the city follows. It clarifies our intent for our financial management, defines our boundaries. Having written financial policies helps us support really good bond ratings, promotes long-term strategic thinking for staff as well as the council, helps us manage risks to our city's financial condition, and it helps us comply with established best practices in the field. These financial policies help us with guidelines for staff when we're developing and recommending the budget, when we're making recommendations throughout the year that have fiscal implications, and to help us fulfill our role as stewards of the city's public funds. So, this year in our comprehensive financial policies document, we're asking the council to reapprove policies that you've approved in the past. The list on this slide, there are no changes this year with these policies. On the next slide, I identified two policies that we are recommending some, some minor changes to, and those are the investment policy and the Development Services Stabilization Reserve. In the case of the investment policy, there was a state legislation that was passed that added a few words that clarified how we measure the term of bonds that we buy in our investment portfolio. It was a very minor clarification, but we updated our policy to reflect that Senate bill. And then in the Development Services Stabilization Reserve Fund policy, we added some clarifying language to make it clear when we measure what the target for that reserve is and how we do that. The target didn't change from when we adopted this policy, but staff felt it was important to make it really clear how that's calculated. Because we're bringing forward this comprehensive set of financial policies, we worked with this two utilities departments of the city, and it took the opportunity to incorporate their financial policies into this document so that staff will be bringing it forward before you each year. So, both the Roseville Electric Financial Policy and the Environmental Utilities Financial Management Policies, we've incorporated into this document. And then this year, we're recommending two new policies. One is an internal control policy, and one is a procurement code of ethics policy. The purpose of the internal control policy is to document the framework that the city follows to formalize policies and procedures for our goal of fiscal responsibility through effective and comprehensive internal controls. Internal controls are really policies and procedures, checks and balances, that every business and every government has. This common framework is adopted by businesses and governments across the country. And this is a very typical framework. We follow it in everything we do, but we've never had it written down in a policy. And so, we took this opportunity to draft this policy that covers the five components of internal controls, which is control environment. That's the environment that we establish as management of an organization that puts emphasis on integrity and accountability through everything that we do, including our core competencies when we hire employees. The second component is risk assessment. That's our role of identifying risks that could get in the way of us achieving the city's objectives. Control activities is the third component, and that's really the nuts and bolts, the procedures that we use to protect the city to make sure that we can achieve our operating objectives. And then information and communication talks about how we need quality information and timely information, and how important it is to communicate about our internal controls to achieve the city's objectives. And then finally, monitoring activities. We have in place processes to monitor to make sure our controls are working effectively on an ongoing basis, and that's an important part of reviewing our internal controls and improving processes where we find improvements are needed. And then the second policy is ethics in procurement. We have a number of different policies and procedures around procurement for the city, but this establishes a written, well-defined code of ethics for city employees throughout our city departments, including our public procurement professionals in the finance department who interact with the public and vendors and represent the city in all of our procurement activities to ensure integrity in the process, and also domain trust from the community and from, from the vendor community. And the policy has these four components that I laid out here, general standards, conduct with our outside vendors and contractors, some information about conflict of interest, and about confidentiality during the evaluation process. This policy doesn't change anything in the way that we do it today, but it makes it clear what our responsibilities are as it relates to ethics in procurement. So, these two new policies will get incorporated into the comprehensive document along with the electric and environmental utilities financial management policies. We're recommending approval tonight for those. As we adopt new policies or make changes to existing policies, we'll bring those back to council as well. And the purpose of these policies is for us to use as a guide as we're developing the budget. And we'll be releasing the budget for next fiscal year later this week to the city council and the public. And that budget is based on these financial policies. So, the recommendation tonight is to approve a resolution adopting the city's financial policies for next fiscal year. And I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Rakuchi, any questions?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Mendonza.
Not at this time. Thank you.
Councilman Albert.
I have a real awkward, carefully worded question. So, we had a, we had a public situation with an internal issue with employees that are not here anymore. And I know that spawned some of these changes, and I've asked the question privately. I know the answer, but I just want to ask it publicly. Do we feel these will catch that kind of a thing? I know we caught it internally, but we've done some additional steps. Do we feel pretty confident that this is going to resolve that kind of issue for our future?
These written policies help establish a framework for staff to work under. As I talk about the different components of internal control, communication's a big part of that. And so, part of what we'll do with those two new policies is work with our HR department and our learning management system to roll those out to our employees citywide and work on that education process. So, it's going to be a combination of having these approved by the city council and then how we communicate them out to the rest of the organization, as well as implementing other improvements that we're working on.
I'll say, as a council member, you know, as a representative of the public, I was very impressed with how this was handled, how thoroughly it was investigated, dealt with, resolved, and, and the steps you guys have taken to try to ensure we never have this kind of a problem again. I know we're dealing with humans and stuff, but I do really appreciate the steps that, that our staff have taken to, to resolve that. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor Bernusconi, any comments?
No.
I don't have any comments. I'll open it up for the public comment. Seeing none, I'll close public comment, and I'll bring it back to the council for any final comments or questions. You know, I just want to say, you know, as you mentioned, we're going to be releasing what's basically close to a billion-dollar budget later this week, and there's a lot of moving parts in it. And so, there's always been a, a culture of ethically responsible fiduciary responsibility, both on this council and within our employee system. And I think this reflects just really what, what is practiced by our employees and, and especially your department. So, with that, I'll ask the clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 8.3, the city council will consider adopting Resolution Number 23-176, adopting the city of Roseville's financial policies effective July 1st, 2023. May I have the motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. At this time, we have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start a roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldishel.
Yes, and I've lost my place. So, I think we're at Agenda Item 8.4.
8.4.
Yeah, thank you very much, Councilmember Mendonza. Housing Successor Agency and City Council, 2023-24 Homeless Prevention and Rapid Re-Housing Funding Requirement. Good evening. Good evening. We have our housing analyst, Susan Accrell, and our econo, nope, and our housing director, Tricia Isom, with us tonight. Thank you. We'll take your presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Haldishel, council. I'm Tricia Isom, Housing Manager in the Economic Development Department, and with me tonight I have Suzanne Accrell, and she will be presenting our homeless prevention, rapid rehousing, funding recommendations for 2023-24.
Thank you. Thank you, Tricia. Good evening, Mayor Haldishel and members of the city council. I'm Suzanne Accrell, Housing Analyst with the Economic Development Department. Tonight, I'll be presenting the 2023-2024 Homeless Prevention and Rapid Re-Housing Funding Recommendations. So, homeless prevention, rapid rehousing was established in 2017 with an initial three-year commitment from Sutter Health's Getting to Zero campaign. Homeless Prevention Rapid Rehousing Services provide temporary assistance to prevent a household from becoming homeless as well as assistance to obtaining permanent housing for those currently experiencing homelessness. Through this grant program, the city's internal homeless team, city's leadership in the Built for Zero movement, and collaboration with Placer County's Continuum of Care, we are better equipped to prevent and address homelessness within Roseville. better equipped to prevent and address homelessness within Roseville. Housing successor agencies are allowed to use up to $250,000 per year on homeless prevention and rapid rehousing. Roseville has used the maximum, what we call low mod funds, for this purpose since 2017. In 2020, Roseville had applied for and was awarded state permanent local housing allocation funds for a five-year period for both City of Roseville and City of Rockland. Housing successor low mod funds and state PLHA funds will infuse almost $4 million into the community over the five-year span. We're continually thankful for our partnership with City of Rockland and their willingness to allow Roseville to apply for and manage these funds on their behalf. The Roseville Housing Division received six applications from eight agencies in response to the 2023-24 Homeless Prevention Rapid Rehousing Notice of Funding Availability. Applications were reviewed using criteria from prior years, as well as city council's direction to place the greatest weight on measurable outcomes. The review panel consisted of staff from City of Roseville Housing, City of Rockland Housing, Roseville Police Department Social Services Unit, and City of Roseville Government Relations. Measurable outcomes considered include number of clients served and housed in relation to the overall cost per client.
Need the next slide? Is that what we— need the next slide, don't we?
Yeah. Oh, perfect. Thanks. So yes, the measurable outcomes considered include number of clients served and housed in relationship to overall cost per client, cost per beneficiary or leveraging overall costs and other resources and funding, collaboration and coordination with local partners and with the cities, and need or gap in services and serving difficult-to-house populations that are currently underserved. As noted in the GIM provided earlier this week, this is one of the programs that assists us in getting and keeping families housed. In combination with the countywide Built for Zero movement, these efforts have resulted in permanently housing 546 residents over the last four years. This includes 142 veterans, 40 of the most vulnerable, and 364 experiencing homelessness So our funding recommendations are as follows: Ask, which is a combination between AMI Housing, St. Vincent de Paul, and Kids First, $500,000; The Gathering Inn, $250,000; Salvation Army, $40,000; The Unity Care Group, $123,794; and Volunteers of America, $64,896. So tonight, we recommend that city council adopt a resolution to approve funding recommendations for the 2023-24 Homeless Prevention Rapid Rehousing Program and authorize city manager to execute all related grant agreements. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Suzanne. Councilman Albert, any questions?
No questions.
Vice Mayor Bernusconi?
No questions.
Councilwoman Rakucci?
No.
All right, I'll open it to public comment.
Could— I'm sorry, could you come to the— yeah.
You have three minutes or less.
Denise Walker. I'm interested in the chronic—the people in the chronic area of homelessness. What does that refer to?
Yeah, Denise, so when you say chronic, can you be more specific?
In her presentation, it had the veterans, and then it had—
Most vulnerable and chronic. And I think you're asking what defines chronic homelessness?
Yes, yes.
It's a good question. HUD, Housing and Urban Development, where most of the funding comes through, defines it as experiencing homelessness for over a year or four times over the past three years, totaling one year or more, and with a disability.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for your question.
Any other public comments or questions? All right, I'll close the public comment and bring it back to the council for any final comments or questions. All right, I'll just say, this is one of my favorite presentations, because having been—and I think we've all taken a ride with our social services unit, interacting and doing outreach on the streets, and, you know, having encountered folks who are in a crisis situation, and having this— having the ability to have this resource for them is certainly uplifting. So I'll ask the clerk to read a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 8.4, the city council will consider adopting Resolution Number 23-167, approving funding recommendations and authorizing the city manager or designate to execute grant agreements on behalf of the City of Roseville. May I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our vote— roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haudashelt.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
And next up is a reservation of affordable housing funds for development of affordable housing projects, and we have our housing manager, Tricia Isom, and Susan Accrell with us again.
Yes, we're back. So yes, I will be presenting the request for approval of reservation of housing funds for development of affordable housing projects. The State of California Local Housing Trust Funds provides matching grants to jurisdictions in order to expand funding sources and increase the supply of affordable housing. The city established our housing trust fund in 2004, and we continue to receive funding through payoffs from developer subsidized loans and resales, as well as developer in lufies. The Roseville Housing Division has submitted annual applications for the local housing trust fund since 2020, and we have received two local housing trust fund awards so far, totaling $6.7 million, which must be matched by the city. In April of 2022, city council approved the listed funding recommendations in order to utilize a total of $10 million in combined state and local funding, based on awards made—that the state made at the time. The state then augmented our 2021 award after city council approved these funding recommendations. I'm not going to complain about additional funds, but this did create an excess of local housing trust funds, and that did make us need to expend additional funds that would support affordable housing. So the Housing Division released a notice of funding availability in February of 2023 to identify additional qualified affordable housing developers and add to our affordable housing pipeline of qualified projects. The sources of capital funds made available for this NOFA included the state— excess state local housing trust fund dollars, matching city local housing trust fund dollars, the new state Pro Housing Incentive Pilot Program, or PIP funds, and low mod income funds. The funds totaled $5.1 million. Surprisingly, the Housing Division only received two responses to our 2023 Affordable Housing NOFA. Mercy Housing requested an additional $3.55 million to augment their current 98-unit project. If you remember, council had already approved a reservation of $4 million for this project. Staff is recommending increasing their reservation by another $2 million at this time. The additional funding will allow the Mercy Housing project to be more competitive and increase its chance of receiving full funding. They are in the process of preparing to submit their third application this summer. The state has yet to finalize the award for our PIP funds. We are cautiously optimistic, based on feedback we've received on our application, but we have yet to receive official word. If the city is successful and HCD decides to award PIP funding to Roseville, staff plans to bring forward another request for reservation of $1.55 million in funding to assist Mercy Housing with pre-development costs for the Pleasant Grove Apartments. Hampstead Partners requested $1.5 million to assist with construction of their workforce project located adjacent to their affordable project, Prospera at Fittiman, the one that broke ground last month. This was the one new project that we were able to add to our affordable housing pipeline. A reservation of funds for Hampstead Partners workforce project will assist with the financing gap that was created by the volatility in the market conditions, as well as the severe increase in construction costs since inception of the project. Staff recommends that city council adopt a resolution to reserve $3 million from Roseville Local Housing Trust Funds and $3 million from state local housing trust funds toward construction of the Mercy Housing Affordable Project, for a total reservation of $6 million, and reserve $500,000 from City of Roseville Local Housing Trust Fund, $500,000 from the state local housing trust fund, and $500,000 from the low mod funds toward construction of Hampstead Partners Workforce Housing Project, for a total of $1.5 million. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your presentation. Questions?
I just had a quick question. I forgot where the Mercy Housing is. It's not—is that the courthouse, or is it someplace else?
It is on Pleasant Grove Boulevard, right next to Escatton Manor.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks. That was my question, too. I was trying to—I looked it up yesterday and forgot it today.
I was trying to— yeah.
You know, what can I say? Councilmember Mendonza, any questions?
Not at this time.
Okay, great. We'll open it up for public comment. A public comment will close, and inquire if the council has any additional questions or comments.
I'm so impressed that Roseville's able to continually do this year after year. It's just—it stands out, and it's fantastic, so.
And it grows, right? So, okay. With that, I'll ask the clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 8.5, the city council will consider adopting Resolution Number 23-196, approving the amended reservation of $6 million in affordable housing funds for the development of affordable housing projects, and reserving $1.5 million in affordable housing funds for the development of affordable housing projects. May I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haudashelt.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Thanks for your presentation, and thanks for your good work as well. Next up, we'll have special requests, reports, and presentations, and our first one is 9.1, Council Discretionary Funds and Sober Grad Night.
It's mine.
And that's yours? Okay. I was looking for Melissa Lipp, but it's you. All right.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Carmen Avalos, and I'm the city clerk. So the city council did receive a request for council discretionary funds from Oakmont High School, Roseville High School, West Park High School, and Wood Creek High School. And the purpose is to support the safe and sober grad night that the city—I'm sorry—that the schools host. The request came in for $500 to each school. We do have representatives here from each high school, should the council have any questions. And that concludes my presentation.
The council, if they have any questions?
No.
And I will open it up for public comment. We don't— no public comment, huh? Okay. All right, then I will bring it back to the council, and we will move forward. I'll ask the clerk to read the motion.
Thank you. On item 9.1, the city council will consider approving council discretionary funds in the amount of $500 to each respective school in support of sober grad night for Oakmont, Roseville, West Park, and Wood Creek High Schools. May I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. Our roll call will start with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haudashelt.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, the next item up is one of—you know, another one of my favorite items annually. That is the fiscal year 2023-2024 Grants Advisory Commission funding, and we're joined by management analyst Toby Thompson, Thomas, and assistant—and housing manager, Tricia Isom.
Back.
You're back. I had you down as Dion, so I'm sorry.
I have a little more hair.
Ouch.
Sorry, Dion.
We have a code of conduct here, and for us follicle-challenging individuals, there will be none of that talk. Go ahead, please give us your presentation.
Okay.
This will take a little time, by the way, so everybody sit back and relax.
Good evening. I am Tricia Isom, Housing Manager in the Economic Development Department, and like you said, with me tonight I have Toby Thomas. She is the management analyst in the city manager's office, and she will be transitioning into the staff liaison position for the Grants Advisory Commission. Before you tonight are the Citizens Benefit Fund, American Rescue Plan Act, and REACH Fund recommendations from the Grants Advisory Commission for fiscal year 23-24. Since the Grants Advisory Commission was created in 1994, the Citizens Benefit Fund has provided almost $17 million to local nonprofits. The REACH Fund, American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA Fund, and in past years, the Roseville Autumn Mall Community Fund, provided another $1.2 million. A total of $18.1 million has been granted directly to nonprofits in our community that serve our residents and improve the quality of life through a variety of programs and services. City council approved current grant funding priorities three years ago, which reflect the community needs analysis that was completed in 2020. The strategic one-time grants are to be used for innovative projects, programs, capital improvements, or new initiatives. Operational mission support grants for programs or projects that address a community need and have demonstrated effectiveness, and small requests go towards either new programs or support existing operations, and are for requests of up to $10,000. The commission received a total of 40 applications, split between the three priority groups. Staff reviewed all applications, and one was deemed incomplete due to the required paperwork that was not returned, and the commission reviewed and scored the 39 applications that were left. Even though increased funds were available for this round due to the addition of $350,000 in ARPA funds, it was still quite challenging for our commission, as the total funds requested equaled just over $1 million. Local nonprofits continue to propose a wide variety of programs and services throughout the community that serve youth, families, and seniors. The commission scored each application on a 100-point scale and used similar review criteria as previous cycles. 27 out of the 39 qualified applications that were submitted are being recommended for funding, as provided with the council communication as Attachment 1. The applications received represented four out of the five social determinants of health, with health and wellness category continuing to be the most popular application type. At this time, staff recommends that council adopt the Grants Advisory Commission recommendations to fund 27 grants in the amount of $604,766 between the Citizens Benefit Fund, ARPA, and REACH funds. This concludes our presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have. In addition, we have our Grants Advisory Commission Chair, Michelle Gibson, as well as several representatives from the applicant pool that are in the audience that they may be able to answer some of your questions as well.
All right, well, let's start with some questions from the council. Councilwoman Rakucci, any questions?
Not at this time.
All right, Councilmember Mendonza.
Not at this time.
Councilmember Albert.
Kind of a comment question. So if Councilmember Tim Herman was still here, he and I might be asking, we had 40 applicants, we funded 39, and it's okay with me if we don't fund everybody who applies as long as they're meeting our— what we want and what we need in the community? So it does sound like we have 39 that actually are meeting what we need in the community?
We are funding—we're requesting to fund 27 out of the 39 applications.
Oh, 27.
Yeah. It's a lot of numbers. I apologize.
I know, it's still a lot of—and I know so much good being done out there, and I appreciate the group doing that, because that is—I know it's a tough thing to try to say no to somebody, but I'm glad that we focus on the strategic needs. So, sorry, I misunderstood that. That's even better news, in a way. Thank you.
Great. And I have— sorry, Vice Mayor Bernusconi. Okay. You explained all the acronyms except for one, and I think it's really important that we highlight REACH, and who is REACH?
Okay, you're going to test my knowledge.
How about it? Roseville employees achieving charitable hearts?
Annual charitable hearts. I believe.
Gosh, darn it. All right, but so, you know, the City of Roseville employees make annual contributions, and that's what the $10,126 is on there.
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm going to open it for public comment, and before I open for public comment, I want to ask our city attorney, because some of the folks on here will need to recuse themselves from voting. Is it okay if I take public comment, and there's public comment on some of those items they will be recusing themselves on? Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine, as long as there's no votes made, and obviously no overt gestures or anything in response to the public comment, but the public comment piece is fine to move forward. And then, once that's concluded, there'll be a little bit of a dance where some of the council members will move out, and then move in, and we'll try to do it as seamlessly as possible.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Okay, I will open it for public comment, and this is an opportunity for, as Ms. Isom said, any of those who are applicants to make any public comments, or anyone else? Yes, come forward.
I'm Laura Kuntz. I'm with the Pedal Connection, and would just like to say thank you for all your past support. We support people on hospice by repurposing flowers and handing to them. We had a hospice nurse come in today and talk about a story about a gentleman who received flowers. He's been in hospice in a room with no windows, and he just cried when he saw the flowers. So I just want to say thank you so much for your support.
All right, thank you for sharing that. Anybody else? Yeah, come forward.
That's terrible.
Yeah.
Hello, my name is Axel.[1794.87]
Hello, my name is Axel. I'm with Life Steps. We provide social services to residents who live in affordable housing. I just wanted to say thank you. We do have two properties here in Roseville, as well as one in Placer County. Two of them, one is a senior site that we provide services to. And then the second one is a special needs, which serves our veterans. And that one is located on Washington Boulevard. I just want to say we appreciate your support. I really enjoyed seeing the approval of more affordable housing, which is much needed.
Thank you for your comments. Next.
Hi, I'm Sarah Weimer, and I'm with Roseville Thriving Youth. And I just want to, again, express our appreciation for your support in our, helping our local youth in being able to, being able to thrive and being able to find community, especially after such a hard few years for them. So just, again, thank you so much for your support for Roseville Thriving Youth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mary Jo Fleming, and we started a parent participation school on the Placer County Fairgrounds 30 years ago, inspired by Bev Boaz. And we have been serving the children of the local area. We have been, it's a barn raising. The place was built on the corporation yard by parents. And we have been requesting support because we actually need some professionals to come in and help us with our construction of the school. We've always been done by just parents volunteering, and things have gotten, they need to be fixed up. This school has been a great need for the children in the area, especially since COVID. We have noticed a lot of trauma in the children. So thank you very much. City of Roseville has been very supportive for us. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Next.
My name is Jamie Hirschman. Excuse me, I'm with the Assistance League of Greater Placer. And we want to thank you for considering our request for a grant for our program. We're an all-volunteer organization, and we offer 13 programs that offer community service. Our largest program is our school clothing program. And in the past fall, we clothed 478 students for a total of $57,688 for students in the Roseville, City of Roseville schools only. In Placer County, we clothed 1,438 children, and our total spending was $173,543. So we would appreciate your consideration again.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Glenda Hay with the Historic Sierra Vista Neighborhood Association and Arcona. And we were established in 1906. Of the 600 homes in our neighborhood, about 150 of them still do not have sidewalks. Our, our neighborhood was dirt roads when we were established. President Roosevelt invested heavily in our neighborhood. We have a whole lot of sidewalks that are stamped 1940 at WPA. And 83 years later, our great President Biden has made the second greatest investment in infrastructure in our nation. And we applied for some of his American Rescue Plan budget to put in a sidewalk. We, we've done this a couple of times. We, we've got shot down our first application, just, just procedural stuff. We just made a mess of the application. The second time, we only applied for one sidewalk, but at least we got through the hoops. So now we, we have a path to putting sidewalks so that the children of Roseville High School, Spandau Elementary, Woodbridge Park, Dog Walkers, Moms with Strollers no longer have to walk in roadways. At least one more section will finally be connected. Thank you very much.
Your comments next.
Good evening. I'm Nicole Harrigan with Gigi's Playhouse Down Syndrome Achievement Centers. And I just wanted to thank you for considering our application. We provide free services for individuals with Down Syndrome and their families. And we just celebrated our second anniversary here in Roseville. Former Mayor Bernisconi was at our ribbon cutting. And we've been very welcomed in Roseville. We've, we've had a wonderful first two years here. We have numerous volunteers from the Roseville area. We are mostly volunteer-run, but our biggest, most expensive program is speech therapy, which is what you're considering funding here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, really quick. I'm Noel Calvert with Sierra College Foundation, and we want to thank you for this opportunity to apply. The college is proud to have opened a basic needs center on campus. And part of that is a food pantry, which has become a significant need, especially since campus reopened. So with over 3,000 students on our campus from Roseville, we are looking for added resources so we can provide the hundreds of students that come each week with food. So, thank you for this opportunity.
Any other comments? You said the chair of the Grants Advisory Commission is here? Any of the Grants Advisory Commission members want to make any comments? All right. Well, I thank you, and this is really one of those uplifting moments throughout the year. And I think you said in your opening comments, this is all possible from back in, I'm going to get the year wrong, but the sale of the Roseville Community Hospital and then endowment going forward. Okay, great. Well, I'll close public comment. I'll inquire if the council has any additional questions. Probably not. And what did you call that, Mr. Speaker, the?
Dance.
The dance. We're going to start the dance. We'll ask, we're going to have certain members of the council who have, will have to recuse themselves, leave. We'll start with Vice Mayor Bernisconi.
Yes.
And ask the clerk to read the motions.
Thank you. Always step out. So Vice Mayor Bernisconi will be recusing herself from the Placer Food Bank PFB due to a conflict resulting from the PFB being her client. She will not participate in the discussion or in the vote for this particular matter. At this time, I'd like to present the motion to the city council to approve the grant for Placer Food Bank in the amount of $45,618. May I please have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our roll call with Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Haudashelt.
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
And now we're going to gain one back and lose two, right?
Yes. Councilmembers Albert and Mendoza, if you'd please step out. Thank you. Councilmember Albert and Councilmember Mendoza will be recusing themselves from the discussion and the vote on the matter pertaining to the grant for the Roseville Police Activities League, or ARPAL, as they have a conflict due to both being board members for the league. At this time, may I please have a motion to approve the grant for the Roseville Police Activities League in the amount of $25,000?
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernisconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Haudashelt.
Yes, and if we'd lost one more, we would have been really in trouble, wouldn't it? Because I can't make a motion.
We'll ask Councilmember Mendoza to return. Thank you. So Councilmember Albert will be, will be recusing himself from the discussion and vote on the grant for the Roseville Coalition of Neighborhood Association, Arcona, as he has a conflict because he's positioned as a board member of the organization, as well as from the Wayfinder Family Services due to a conflict resulting from his spouse receiving income in the first quarter of 2023. At this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve grants for Arcona in the amount of $7,336, and for Wayfinder Family Services in the amount of $10,000. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernisconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yep.
Councilmember Rakuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Haudashelt.
Yes.
All right.
And we'll have Miss Councilmember Albert back.
Come back to full strength and finish this up.
Correct. Thank you. Having the full council back at the dais, we're going to take on item 9.2. City Council will consider approving the remaining Grants Advisory Commission's recommendations for fiscal year 2023, 24 in the amount of $516,812. May I please have a motion to approve the remaining grants as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernisconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Haudashelt.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you all for your, your work in our community. Welcome to stay. We're going to have some budget updates. A pretty exciting stuff. Oh, what?
No left.
Okay. You know, all our stuff is online. I meant to say that, too. I saw you take a picture. All our stuff is online, so, yeah, so, yep. If you talk to Carmen or Helen.
Be happy to get you a picture.
Something, so.
Here, she can have mine.
Oh, there you go. Look at this.
Lot lighter in here.
Wow. Feeling lonely here. All right. Next up is Roseville Electric update, and this is Joanne Rakuchi. She's in the back, isn't she? All right, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Haudashelt. Members of the council, Sean Matcham, Chief Operating Officer for Roseville Electric. Here with me this evening is Eric Campbell, our interim Assistant Electric Utility Director. And yes, indeed, buckle up. We have a budget update for the electric department. Brief presentation on the FY '24 budget development process for our electric utility. Eric will step through the presentation, and we can answer any questions you may have after he's done.
Thank you, Sean. Good evening, Mayor Haudashelt, members of the commission. I'm Eric Campbell. This is our annual update on our proposed FY '24 budget. This is for informational purposes only. We're not asked for any action. But as a enterprise fund, we want to give you an idea of how we're going to use our revenues to cover our expenses so you get a little more context with respect to our budget. It was developed and, of course, in alignment with the city council's strategic plan. In particular, the strategy to balance our services and rates in light of legislative mandates and rising costs. We are submitting a balanced budget. It does position us to deliver safe and reliable electricity. We'll get into more what that means a little bit later. And then also maintains compliance with our council-approved financial policies. Just to kind of give you a little bit of a reminder on what's in the electric budget. Obviously, electric operations, capital investments, about $25 million in capital investments. About six of that is funded by developers. The franchise fee, it's up to $8 million in FY '24. That's the 4% franchise fee that's in the city charter. Also, city streetlights. We've gone through a project to swap out the city streetlights with LEDs. That's nearing completion. Traffic signals, we fund the traffic signals department, it's about $2.7 million. We pay 50% of the utility billing group's cost. That's about $4.2 million. We share that with EU. We also share the Utility Exploration Center with EU. That's roughly $600,000. And then finally, there's a big bucket here of allocations, indirect costs, ISFs from, from the city. It's about $7 million. So let's talk numbers. I'm going to point your attention to the column on the far right. This is our proposed FY '24 budget. Again, it's a balanced budget that we're submitting. I'm going to do a comparison between the proposed '24 budget with respect to the budget in '23. That middle column, you can disregard it. It's the forecast for '23, if you're interested, for reference. So revenue, comparing revenue for '24 versus '23, that's the 186 versus the 171. You can see it's up $15 million in comparison. What's driving that? Well, it's the surcharge that we put in place. That's the 8% surcharge. That yields about $13 million in additional revenue. It also includes the rate increase that was improved two years ago. It includes six months of that. It's about $3 million. And then our hydro adjustment, it's going to be reduced for FY '24 by about $1 million. So those three items together make up a $15 million variance. Other revenue, we have a pretty big jump there from 2 to 12. The big number there is GHD allowances. We're going to be selling our allowances and using that money to fund the AMI project. And again, that's about $9 million.
Wait, 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 wait. Greenhouse gases.
Mm-hmm.
Advanced meter. Okay. I'm going to be the acronym, please.
Yeah, we're actually using the greenhouse gas allowances that were awarded. We have excess, and so we're going to sell those off and use that funding for the AMI program, the smart meter program.
Okay.
Also, wholesale revenue is in that row as well. We have about $1 million in wholesale revenue in FY '24. Operating expenses are up significantly. So they've gone from 145 up to 169. The big driver there is power supply cost. We're still in a market where power supply costs are still elevated. So in total, it's up about $18 million comparing '23 versus '24 from a power supply perspective. Labor's up about $2.9 million. It's primarily related to collective bargaining agreements that have been previously negotiated. Labor, the ONM capital split between the expense side and the capital side, there's been some adjustments made there that's pulled about $1.5 million from the capital side over to the expense side. And so that puts upward pressure on the expense side. That's about $1.5 million. So altogether, those three items, power supply, labor, and the ONM capital split make up the difference between '23 and '24. I'm going to drop down to the non-operating expenses. You can see that $17 million there in the far right and compare it against the $20 million on the FY '23 column. That has an assumption built in there for a $5 million reduction in our debt service. When we brought the 8% surcharge to you last year, we also had a plan to pay down some debt to actually reduce our debt service and avoid passing this cost on to customers. That row also has the franchise fee. The franchise fee is up about $1 million year, year over year. And so again, we're proposing a balanced budget for FY '24, so our revenues are going to be sufficient to cover our expenses. Next, we have our financial policies. We monitor these pretty frequently. These are the council-approved financial policies. The first one here is days cash on hand. The target here is to maintain above 250 days cash on hand. We're forecasted to have a 257 days cash on hand. That 257 includes a recent settlement we had from the Central Valley Project of about $9 million. That service coverage ratio, we have a target of above 2. Right now, we're forecasted at 4.21. That number is very high because we just paid down that debt that I mentioned on the previous page. And so it's, it's higher than normal for FY '24. So both metrics are comfortably above the targets. Next, we have our, our strong financial foundation. From a rates perspective, in comparison to SMD, most recently, we're about 5% to 13% less across all customer groups. And then there's a recent study where we actually ranked third in the state amongst municipal utilities in terms of our cost. Also, continued emphasis on long-term planning and cost discipline. About 85% of our costs are power supply or labor, so it doesn't leave a lot of levers for us to cut costs, but we are not adding any new positions in this proposed budget. What we're doing is we're reclassing existing positions for highest and best use, and we're really trying to avoid adding positions going forward. I want to note that S&amp;P and Fitch, both rated A. S&amp;P in particular, we're one of their strongest credits in the country from a municipal utility perspective, not just California, which is pretty incredible for us. Strategic plan, we're going to go through some of the initiatives that we have planned for the upcoming year. This first item here is remaining fiscally responsible in a changing world. The first initiative is we're going to be evaluating a potential rate case. We do see energy costs increasing in the future. It's looking more and more like the 8% will be proposed to stay in place, but again, we're monitoring prices, but as of right now, it looks like we'll be coming back for increases in the future. I also share that power supply is becoming a significant portion of our cost structure that we're looking at decoupling our rates, and what that means is really breaking out the power supply component as a separate line item on the bill and in setting it up as a balancing account where it basically adjusts, and it's more reflective of the cost that we're incurring in the marketplace, and we can set aside the other operating costs of the utility. Organization restructuring, we just went through restructuring. What we really did is we tightened the coca responsibility in the leadership area. In particular, our assistant director position over operations and engineering was split into two positions. We think it's going to give us better, you know, better focus on those areas, having one individual focus on them individually. We also added a COO position, which Sean was awarded as well, and Sean's going to pull all those different assistant directors together and keep us marching forward. Also working on the IRP, the Integrated Resource Plan. This is our plan for how we're going to source the electricity over the next several years. We're required to file it every five years. And it's really, we're looking for reliable sources, affordable, that also meet the mandates of the state. And again, the mandates, SB 1020 that was passed last year, we're required to have 90% of our energy be sourced from renewable sources by 2035, and that's just around the corner. So those dates are creeping up on us. And then lastly, here, identify evaluate grant opportunities. Dan Beans has really pushed the focus on grants. We submitted an application for a grant about a month ago for $450,000 for Smart Grid monies. That's really an upgrade of our SCADA, which is the software and hardware that monitors our infrastructure in the field. Next, enhance economic vitality. We really believe that our reliability, our low cost is really attractive to businesses looking to relocate to the area. We've added a new position. It was actually added in FY23, Manager of Partnerships, and it's going to bring together economic development with customer programs, and we think it really makes sense to bring those two together to have a unified focus for those areas. Next, I'm going to jump down to support new development. We have a number of substations in play right now. The Creekview Sub, Roseville Industrial Park, there's some investments in the Vernon Sub. These are things we're going to be looking at and investing in over the next 10 years. We now have a 10-year capital plan. Five years just wasn't enough for us from an electric utility perspective, the amount of planning, the supply chain issues that we're seeing, and so we've moved to a 10-year plan, and you'll see that on the next page, I believe. Invest in well-planned infrastructure. Number one there, building the electrification, electrical vehicle programs. These are funded by public benefits. We set aside 2.85% to fund these programs. It's also funded by the low-carbon fuel credits. We actually receive credits from the state for reduction of carbon dioxide in the service territory. I mentioned on the previous page that we have a 10-year CIP plan. We're really investing a lot of time in long-term planning. The lead time on a substation transformer is now three and a half years between order and delivery, so it's pretty significant. Phase two of the legacy building, that's floors three and four, that's the building across the street. Hopefully, we move in sometime later next year in those floors. And then lastly, partner with other entities to support reliability, and this is really the work we've done with Department of Water Resources on the Peker units out at REP. We're also in discussions with SMUD on Country Acres as well. And then support community engagement and advocacy. This is an important item for us. We're subject to so many different onerous legislative mandates. We do what we can with our, you know, NCPA relationships, the MUA relationship, to really, you know, have a unified voice and, you know, pushing back on some of those regulations. And then finally, where we see some risk and challenges ahead, I mentioned power supply costs previously. Just looking out over the estimated costs in the next five years, it looks like costs are going to be up 30%. Now, again, that's not FY24, that's over the next five years going out to FY28. Economic uncertainty, we're certainly seeing that with inflation. We're seeing it being, we're seeing it surface in our supply chain. Supply chain challenges are here as well. Transformers, we have about capacities to support 1,400 homes right now. It's about a year's worth of transformers right now. Deliveries are kind of spotty, but we are, we have resumed receiving transformers. Next is Air Resources Board Regulations. You may have all seen the regulation was passed recently on diesel vehicles. There's going to be a phase out of those vehicles that begins in 2024, which is to be completed in 2045. Then also, in 2035, no more new cars or new light trucks will be permitted to be sold in California. Future rate adjustments, again, I think I mentioned on our prior page, we'll be looking at future rate adjustments. Labor negotiations are a concern. You know, some of the numbers that we're seeing coming through there are much higher than we had expected on the technical side, but technical skills are in high demand. These are the folks who are in the field, the linemen, troubleshooters, substation techs, folks like that. We're in competition with SMUD and the PG&Es and folks of that world. And then lastly, legislative and regulatory, which is always a persistent risk. And then that's the conclusion. We're open for questions if you have any.
Councilman Albert, questions?
So if you could give the year one more time, about no future non-green trucks being purchased at, what was the year?
The end date is 2045. It begins in 2035 and it's phased in until 2045. And those are heavy-duty diesel trucks.
Got it.
I was thinking, they should be flying by then, right? I don't have any comments. I appreciate all the information and your work on this.
Thank you.
Mr. Woman, Rakuchi.
I also appreciate the information and where we are with the transformers and the supply chain and doing what we can to keep our prices down in a very unchanging, a very changing world.
Councilmember Manzah.
Great updates. Thank you.
Yeah.
Couple of questions. So we did get a $9 million legal award, but I guess if you look at the size of the budget now, so does that, would that have impacted the surcharge or the rate increase?
At this time, I would say no, just because of the financial condition. We're right on the border on our financial metrics. Is it possible at some point in time before this, you know, elevated power supply event occurred, could we've done a rebate? Possibly, but just where we are right now, it just doesn't make sense. We wouldn't propose that.
Yeah, all added, does help our days cash on hand. You saw our financial policies, our metrics there earlier. Eric did mention that that refund, which I think was the result of some good work by the utility and some of the neighboring utilities, it does help our cash reserves, but in terms of setting rates around a one-time cash influx is not something we would recommend as an organization.
Under the strong financial foundation, I want to make sure I understood what you said. So we rank third in the state in affordability? Is that it?
In rates. Well, we could say affordability as well.
Not in cost.
Our rates are third lowest.
Lowest, okay, thanks. I just want to make sure I understood that. And then transformers, did I understand you saying we're starting to get transformers?
We're getting deliveries, but they're spotty.
Okay, I'm going to credit Vice Mayor Bernascony's trip to NHB last year for that. Not my trip this year, so, but that's great news because if the transformer supply, the supply chain ends, then, you know, we have 1,400 homes.
Right.
Then that impacts the entire budget, you know, on our property tax side of it. Yep, okay. And then you said power supply is going to go 30% over five years, is that it?
That's the present estimate. It changes from week to week.
That certainly, wish it wasn't that. Okay. I'll open up for public comment. Close public comment and see if the council has any additional questions.
I have an additional comment. I just want to mention, I really do appreciate the benefit of having our own electric company that are, you know, municipally-owned electric company because I know it was a key factor in Bosch coming to Roseville, having that very affordable power, and I just wanted to point that out. That's another nice benefit of helping us with our prosperity in the region here.
There's nothing else. This was an information-only item, no actions needed. Thanks for your presentation, and now we're going to talk about the other.
Thank you.
Utilities, the environmental utilities, and joined by Assistant Department Heads, Sean Bigley. Director, I should use your proper title.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor Howde Schultz. Sean Bigley, I'm the Assistant Environmental Utilities Director, so it's my pleasure tonight to provide you with a brief budget update. And with that, we'll go ahead and go through the slides and give you a basic overview of what we have planned with respect to the budget. So with respect to remaining fiscally responsible in a changing world, just a few elements that we incorporate in terms of our budget planning. So we are a growing organization. We try to be progressive with respect to our service delivery, and we're also very customer-focused. And so in terms of our rate process, we focus in on a 10-year financial planning and forecasting. We were just here with our latest rate proposal, and so we certainly went through the details of that proposal. We pride ourselves in noting that we provide service at a high value. We're not necessarily the lowest cost, but what we want to do is provide a high-value service at a very competitive rate. In addition, we've been able to maintain for a number of years a very high customer service satisfaction level, so the most recent survey that we've done with our customers, which is on a two-year cycle, is about a 98% customer satisfaction level. So we want to certainly maintain that going forward, and we work really hard to do that every day. So our, the utilities are funded by user fees, not taxes. Again, environmental utilities provides water, wastewater, waste services as our primary lines of business. We also have recycled water and some other programs related to stormwater within the portfolio. The utilities run mostly like a business. I wouldn't say exactly like a business, but we're very business-focused in terms of providing the best, best service we can efficiently. We, based on council policy, have been providing rate adjustments over time. We are on a two-year cycle with the idea that those adjustments would likely, if we need to do an adjustment, be smaller but more frequent and kind of smooth out the impact to our customers. We are also a significant contributor to the general fund related to impacts that we have to the city in whole. And then we're very focused on continued service, reliability, and rehabilitation of our infrastructure. So this next slide is really just a comparison in terms of our budgeted operational expenses. So this is a comparison between FY23 and FY24. And so I won't go through the numbers per se, but certainly you'll see here it's largely somewhat stable in terms of those expenditures. There is some variance. I'll give you one example on the water utility. Oftentimes, the expenditures do vary just based on projects that come online. Vacancies certainly do have a factor. Costs related to doing business do vary. Chemicals, purchase water costs, things like that do vary from time to time. So with respect to our expense forecast for FY24, this chart really just shows you sort of the relative percentage of all the utilities and how they kind of stack up. So in terms of the smaller utility within the portfolio, that's our waste services division, which provides waste services to the community, municipally-owned and operated. The next is our water utility, which is about equal size to waste services. And then finally, the larger of the utilities is our wastewater utility. And the reason why that utility is larger is because we have two regional wastewater treatment plants that provide service not only to the city of Roseville within our service area, but we also provide service to outlying communities in Plaster County. In terms of focus areas for environmental utilities, so this chart really just shows sort of the various aspects that we keep in mind as we go forward. And so again, the core functions are on the bottom, which I explained earlier with respect to the utility. And then we have really four focus areas, one being fiscal performance, the other is legislation and policy unfunded mandates, which has a significant impact to our operational costs. Also has a significant impact in terms of local decision-making. We'll get into that a little bit more. Resource portfolio development, that really has to do with reliability of service, and we're really focused in on looking just over the horizon in terms of planning for the future. And then another important aspect is workforce development. We'll get into a little bit more detail on what that means with respect to environmental utilities. So on the fiscal performance aspect, so again, we just are wrapping up, or we're currently in the second year of our last two-year rate case, and we, among other city departments and operations, certainly saw the impact of inflation eroding some of those gains that we were able to achieve through the last rate adjustment, also because of the supply chain issues that also drove up costs significantly just based on supply and demand. The rate adjustments that are scheduled for fiscal year '24, for a typical residential customer, we're looking at a $2.10 increase for wastewater, $2.86 per month, and waste services, we're not, we did not propose to increase waste services at this time, their rate structure. This rate adjustment is a two-year rate adjustment, and with the first year going into effect July 1st of this year. And then in conjunction with a audit that was conducted, we're working with our chief financial officer to continue to enhance our internal controls and structures within the utility. All right, so the next one is really to kind of go through the legislative and policy unfunded mandates, which again is a significant impact. We just wanted to kind of highlight, this is just a subset. These are probably our top four right now that we're really trying to get our arms around and get it prepared for. Talked a little bit about the Advanced Clean Fleets Regulation that was just approved. That'll have a significant impact in terms of the makeup of the fleet relative to the requirements. So the purchase requirements for electric vehicles over a certain tonnage will require 50%. Vehicles be electric in nature by 2024, and then by 2027, 100% of those purchase requirements or requirements will be in place by 2027. So the net effect of that is we really have to be strategic in terms of our current fleet and trying to maximize the life of that fleet to get the best outcome for our rate or for our customers, but also prepare for the future relative to the cost of those vehicles. So as an example, refuse trucks, we're looking at essentially a doubling of the cost of a typical refuse truck, based on sort of the range of those vehicles. It may require us also to increase the number of refuse trucks to actually do the routes that we need to do to provide this service level that our customers expect. The other one is the lead-in copper rule regulation. That is a requirement that we go out and do a desktop analysis that essentially looks at the system as a whole, but generally speaking, looking at the customer's side of the system and determining whether there's any fittings that potentially have lead in them, and looking at a plan to address those issues going forward. You'll see no dollar amount there on that item, and the reason being is the desktop analysis, we have a general sense of what that looks like. That's essentially working with a professional consultant to help us through that process. But the big question mark at this point is, is how many of those potential lead services are out there and what the cost would be essentially to mitigate or repair those according to the federal regulation. So it's a bit of a TBD on that one, but it is going to be a significant, it could be a significant impact going forward. Water efficiency standards, we are in the midst of implementing legislation that was passed in 2018. That is a very significant effort. I won't go into all the detail of that implementation, but just suffice to say, it's definitely requiring us to change up how we do water efficiency in the city and some of the programmatic offerings, interactions with the business community, et cetera, are going to be changing over time to meet the standards that the state has imposed. And then finally, one that we're also looking at is just water loss performance standards. This is also an outcome of the efficiency legislation. That has a significant impact in terms of really pushing the city to look at system leakage within our water distribution system, detecting leaks, dealing with leaks quickly. It also affects how we actually calibrate meters, making sure we're capturing water that should be considered revenue water as well as system pressure. And so the state Water Resources Control Board has gotten very involved in what traditionally would be operational decisions, and they are working towards putting together some regulations that will affect how we manage the system going forward. All right, moving on to resource portfolio very quickly. So this is a significant effort that we undertake within environmental utilities. The, there's several examples that kind of illustrate how we're focused in on developing the resources availability and reliability within Roseville. So we are continuing to expand our Aqua for Storage and Recovery Program. We've got two ASR wells that are nearing completion on the west side of town. We've also got two other ASR wells that are getting ready for the first phase of construction, and then after that, there's two ASR wells that are planned after that. And then, after that, there's two ASR wells that are planned after that. Also, we're looking to work with Plaster County Water Agency to create additional water supply reliability to the city with respect to both our treated water system improvements as well as potential connections upstream for raw water to access available water supplies from Plaster County Water Agency as a way to mitigate potential threats related to Folsom Reservoir as it pertains to climate change impacts and other impacts to the system. We're also conducting an environmental review of our utility operations center. We are nearing completion on the Pleasant Grove Wastewater Treatment Plant Expansion Project. And future projects are also going to be proposed moving forward to make sure that our regional wastewater treatment plants have sufficient capacity to meet the needs of not only the city of Roseville, but our partnering agencies. And then, again, we're continuing to rehabilitate all of our assets, both vertical assets like our water treatment plants, wastewater treatment plants, as well as making some investments in some of the older core neighborhoods. We've finished a project about a year or so ago in the Hillcrest neighborhood. We're doing some other improvements out in central Roseville, as well as future neighborhoods that we're looking to do, working with Public Works to get that work done and make sure that that infrastructure is in good shape. All right. Workforce development. Again, we're examining the organization and structure moving forward, and we're trying to evolve to meet the need. workload continues to grow, growing city, and so certainly, our department is feeling those impacts. And really, just understanding the mission, our mission to some extent has grown over time, and certainly, we need to make sure that the organization is aligned accordingly to meet that mission and in obviously alignment with the city's goals and the city council's goals. We're also looking at how we can recruit and retain key people and the capabilities. And this certainly remains a challenge. One example is finding senior engineers that are out there that have quite a bit of experience. It's a very challenging environment out there, really a lot of competition for the talent that's out there, as well as some of our trade occupations, welders, INC technicians, folks like that. Those folks are highly sought after, and so, we're certainly looking at how we, the city, can remain competitive in trying to make sure that we can recruit and retain those critical positions as well as maintaining our workforce in general. And then, we're really focused at this point in using values and culture to drive positive change. The city of Roseville as an organization puts a lot of emphasis on that, and Environmental Utilities is doing its level best to make sure that we're consistent with that effort and trying to enhance that effort over time. So, with that, I will stop there and see if you have any questions for me.
Councilwoman Rakucci, questions?
Just a couple of questions, Sean. You mentioned recently you've been, I remember the work in Hillcrest area, doing some of the underground work because central Roseville has pipelines that are probably almost 100 years old.
Yeah.
And so, you're making replacements. If you were going to do a best guess for Hillcrest, and I know there was area by Kirby School in that area with even fire hydrants that were replaced, how much have we put into those roads?
Into the roads itself?
Underneath, so you know, our substructures.
The infrastructure itself, I would say, generally speaking, probably prior to Hillcrest, probably not the level of effort that we probably undertook through Hillcrest. So, I think when we talk about the amount of infrastructure and the scale that we're going into neighborhoods, in my time with the city, I don't recall there being projects done at that scale in those neighborhoods for some of that infrastructure. I know that from time to time, there will be kind of very strategic pieces that might be changed up. It could be a fire hydrant, or it could be, you know, other connections in from the system. But, in terms of the general scale, when we started that Hillcrest project, I think we established sort of a new level of going in and really updating that infrastructure.
Well, I guess where I'm going at, even here where we're standing right now, is the infrastructure we did when we were rehabilitating this area. So, there's been, I want to say hundreds of thousands, but it's probably millions. It's a lot of money.
Yes.
Sometimes I've heard comments, you know, that we don't put any money in, you know, central Roseville, and sometimes you don't see it on the top. What you see is underneath and making sure it's strong and sustainable for our community. So, there's a lot of projects coming along, and I know there's a lot of roadway projects that are coming along. And, you know, being in a big city like we are, there's a lot of roads. So, it's, and there's a lot of roads that do need enhancement, and they're on a timeline to be completed. And again, if something really becomes more than a pothole or more than a small, or kind of big but not the biggest item to be done, it'll get top priority if something needs to be done.
Yeah. And I would just say that the projects that, the neighborhood projects that we're doing are timed so that we get in, we do the work on the water wastewater side before roadway surfacing happens. So, what we're basically following is Public Works is doing roadway resurfacing. We're getting in ahead of them actually, getting that work done. And then, the work's done, they pave the road, and we're not back there tearing the road back up. So, we're very strategic in that regard, just making sure we get that work done. And then, with respect to system failures or things that happen, we have a crew, we have a construction crew that will respond to main breaks, things like that. So, that happens on a weekly basis. We're out there all the time making those repairs. So, we're doing both in many cases.
And that's great. Thank you for that.
You bet.
Councilmember Mendoza?
No comments, thank you.
Councilman Albert?
I'm just amazed on the vehicle purchase. In your case here, the big vehicles, 50% by 2024 and 100% by 2027. That's, we've got some big challenges coming up ahead of us.
Yeah. Very expensive. Yep.
Vice Mayor Berniscony? All right. Any other public comment? Closed public comment. Again, this is just an informational item. Thank you. We'll see you during the big budget process again, I'm sure.
Thank you.
So, thanks very much. All right. We're at the point of the agenda for a public hearing. I'm going to ask the city clerk to walk us through a couple of these public hearings.
Great, thank you. So, on item 10.1, the city council will continue this public hearing for the formation of the Amaruso Ranch Community Facilities District Number One and Number Two, Public Services, and the annexation of territory and authorized special taxes in the city of Roseville Community Facilities District Number Three, Municipal Services Annexation Number 28, Amaruso Ranch. This will be moved and continued to the June 21st city council meeting. At this time, may I please have a motion to continue this public hearing?
So, move.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start a roll call with Vice Mayor Berniscony.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldishell.
Yes. And then, item 10.2.
Thank you. Item 10.2 is the Roseville Parkway Extension Project Resolution of Necessity. This item is being removed from the agenda and will not be heard.
And you need no motion on that.
No motion, that's correct.
Great. Well, we're at a point, another very exciting point in our agenda tonight with 10.3 Costco Project Economic Development Incentive Agreement and Budget Adjustment. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask Assistant City Manager Ryan DeVore for his presentation.
Thank you. Yeah. Good evening, mayor and councilman. Ryan DeVore, Assistant City Manager, and I'm here tonight to present on staff's recommendation to provide an economic incentive to Costco as the catalyst to the baseline marketplace. I'm joined by Assistant City Attorney Joe Speaker, pulling double duty tonight, and City Engineer Mark Stout. I'm thankful for their knowledge and expertise as key members of the city team who worked with DF Properties and Costco on this deal. I'd also like to thank Mike Isom, Greg Bitter, Dom Casey, and Dennis Kaufman, who played important roles in pulling this together. Baseline Marketplace is an 81-acre regional retail development located in the Sierra Vista specific plan along Baseline Road between Market Street and Fittiman Road. That build-out, this regional retail project, will total approximately 750,000 square feet and is expected to generate nearly $3 million in annual sales tax revenue after the first phase and $7 million a year eventually, making it the third highest sales tax generator in the city behind only the Auto Mall and the Galleria. The project entitlements were initially approved in 2014 and then extended in 2017, 2020, and February of 2022. Finally, the entitlements were updated to their current form and approved on April 17th of this year. Next slide. In 2021, DF Properties contacted the city with a potential deal to land Costco as an anchor tenant in the baseline marketplace. Costco expressed interest in purchasing 29 of the 81 acres to develop a Costco warehouse, fueling center, car wash, and other outlying retail uses. However, they shared that a large fee burden of over $14 million for just the Costco property and significant upfront infrastructure costs of nearly $16.5 million had stalled the deal. Shortly after being contacted by DF Properties, the city began gathering data and researching the issue, including fees, retail absorption, and examples of other city support for projects like this in our region. This chart is from an April 2021 study of development impact fees in various areas of Roseville as well as in several regional cities. The two large yellow arrows to the left and right show the four fee areas in Roseville that were evaluated, and the vertical yellow arrow highlights the Sierra Vista specific plan fees. Note that the bar graph areas shown in green are the plan area infrastructure fees, which exist only in Sierra Vista and double the fee total. This is primarily due to the existence of multiple owners, the lack of existing infrastructure when the plan was created, the high level of service in Roseville, and the concentration of development on this site. The city also conducted several studies to assess overall economic conditions. Economic Planning Systems completed a retail demand and absorption study in May of 2021. The baseline marketplace project is considered regional-serving retail. As shown on this table from the study, demand for regional-serving retail in West Roseville at city build-out is lower than the land allocated to this type of use. Therefore, securing a large regional-serving retail site like this ensures that the city gets the tax revenue rather than it going elsewhere. In other words, this oversupply means that we depend on areas outside of West Roseville to meet the demand, as do the Auto Mall and the Galleria, for example, which is ever-changing due to development in regional retail centers throughout the region. Next slide. As shown on this slide, there are examples of city financial support for other high-tax-generating or significant employment opportunities both in Roseville and regionally. Both the Roseville Galleria and the Roseville Auto Mall received support from the city, excuse me, to overcome significant infrastructure needs. We are now reaping the rewards from the work of previous staff and council leadership. Also, for a more direct comparison, in 2017, the city of Elk Grove agreed to provide an $8 million incentive to Costco to address similar infrastructure needs, which would be equivalent to about $10 million today. In summary, we consulted with Economic Planning Systems and Kaiser Martston to assess the viability of the project and the financial need. We also regularly checked in with DF Properties, Costco, and their legal, real estate, and engineering teams along the way. It was determined that the fee burden in the Sierra Vista specific plan is challenging to project viability. Also, the retail absorption study showed that if this area wasn't developed soon, it would be unlikely to develop as surrounding areas met the regional retail need. The Sierra Vista specific plan also relies on the tax revenue from this project to balance financially, and there's a significant need for retail in West Roseville. Finally, there are examples regionally where city support was necessary to move a significant As the first to build out the baseline marketplace, Costco is required to construct $16.5 million of public infrastructure to serve the site, $6 million of it unreimbursed. Once completed, Costco's phase of the baseline marketplace will bring nearly $3 million in annual sales tax revenue to the city. The Costco project will bring 200 temporary construction jobs paid at prevailing wages, as well as 210 part-time and 210 full-time jobs paying an average hourly wage of $27.50 plus benefits. Finally, Costco will build the infrastructure for all of baseline marketplace, catalyzing the development and bringing much-needed retail to West Roseville. After many months of negotiation, staff recommends that council approve a not-to-exceed $6 million incentive paid to Costco upon store opening, which is equal to the unreimbursed infrastructure costs associated with the development. Additionally, Costco expressed concern regarding the timing of reimbursements for the remaining $10.5 million of public infrastructure necessary to build out the site but not attributable to the Costco development. Staff feels confident most of the reimbursement would occur within five to seven years. However, it was important to Costco to have some certainty regarding that timing, so staff recommends a backstop of these reimbursements if they have not been paid within the seven years of store opening. It is extremely unlikely this would happen, but if it did, the city would pay Costco up to $1.8 million, the portion of that they felt was most risky, and then take Costco's place to be reimbursed instead. But, we feel that that was very unlikely to happen. But, it's important to the deal to have that certainty. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Right.
Several people from the ownership group and Costco are here as well.
Okay. We'll keep it to questions in this round. Councilwoman Rakucci, any questions?
I think I'm going to wait until after we get the rest of the report.
Member Mendoza, any questions?
I don't have questions, but I do have a comment.
Okay. We'll get to that in a little bit. Councilman Albert, questions?
I do have a couple. So, one basic question is, we're giving a special incentive to help this happen, which is exciting, I know, for a lot of residents on the west side. But, how do we keep every other retail store from coming to us and asking us for a similar assistance?
Good question. Yeah. I think this is uniquely significant sales tax generating, which is similar to projects that we've supported before, like the Auto Mall and the Galleria. But, I believe it's narrow enough from that perspective that if another entity wants to bring us a deal that'll get us $100 million over the next 20 years, we would listen to them too.
And then, when I did the calculation, it's 3 million a year of revenue back to the city just from Costco once they open. That's correct?
From Phase One, which includes the Costco store, the fueling station, the car wash, and then there are three outlying parcels that Costco purchased as well on that map shown on the second slide.
So, that would be 3 million a year. And then, at full build-out, you said, was it 7 million a year?
7 million, yes.
Okay. So, the ROI on this is pretty decent.
Pretty good.
In my understanding, and I wonder if you could just address it, without this, what would be the estimate of when they could possibly go? Because I know that was a big issue, is they just weren't going to be able to go without some assistance because there's just too many fees set up. So, did we have an estimate about how far out it would be if we did not do this?
Without this support, it's likely that they would build a store in an area locally but not in Roseville, and then, we would lose out on all of that revenue.
Okay. Thank you for addressing that.
Vice Mayor Berniscony, any questions?
Nothing right now.
I don't either, and so, I'll open it up for public comments.
I know a representative from Costco's here. I don't know if they wanted to say anything.
Well, I'd like to welcome him to the podium.
Yeah.
Thank you. My name's Mike DeBroda. I represent Costco. I appreciate the opportunity with mayor and the council people, and the support of the staff has been great. I'm not here to make a big presentation. I think Ryan did a great job. I'm here to answer any questions that the public or the council may have.
Councilman Albert?
When will you start?
Well...
And when will you finish?
Well, I'm not going to tell you the exact dates because I don't know, but we are in for permitting for the off-sites. So, the plan would be as soon as we get the permits for the off-sites. the offsites, the infrastructure work, we would close escrow on the Costco parcel and start that at that time. There's probably about a year's worth of work of infrastructure, and the way Costco works is they will then time their warehouse opening when the offsites are complete, because we need to make sure that all the offsites are in and operational before we open, not only for the members but for the public and everybody else, it's safety.
So, in basic, do you have like a guesstimate date range of opening? And I'm sorry, I'm just gonna get asked this over and over, so...
Okay, let's say that we can get permits by near the end of this year, we could very possibly be open by the end of next year. We typically don't open during the holiday season, so it could very possibly fall into January or February after the next holiday.
Thank you, thank you so much.
As quick as we can, because we know the public likes Costco, we have a little bit of membership issues with the existing Roseville, and we're trying to alleviate some of those to get the people from West Roseville to shop at home.
Oh, I bet they will.
A question for you, and I'm not sure if this falls under your purview, but can you talk a little bit about the performance of the Roseville Costco? Do you, I understand that that's like one of the highest performing...
Other than one of the best in the United States, I can't say. Yes, it's very good.
So the problem you're referring to is capacity, you can't get them in and out.
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay. Great, anything else? Thank you for your investment.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Unless there's other, any other public comments, I will close public comments.
I have a quick question. Um, this...
Hello, my name's Lauren Meeks-Harris, and I just quickly wanted to ask if maybe the Costco representative could answer, if he's allowed to answer, but this will not affect the current Costco. They're not gonna do, as I've seen it, do not necessarily Costco but other stores, so close the store on one side of town and move it to the newer part. So, for the rest of the Roseville residents, are you gonna still keep the current Costco open?
Yeah.
There's absolutely no intention to close the existing Roseville. It will stay open and operate.
Thank you.
Thanks very much for the question and the answer, all right. There are no other public comment, I'll close public comment, I'll close the public hearing, and I will inquire if the council has any other questions and comments other than thank you and congratulations. All right, nothing? Nothing?
We do.
We do.
Go ahead.
This is very exciting, this is something we wanted from the day, you know, the day that West Roseville started to begin, and I think it answers a lot of things that the community wants and what we need as a city. They'll have a wonderful store and opportunities of other stores coming in, and that's great. Also, there's a tax revenue from West Roseville, a tax base from buildings here, and it's non-residential, so I think it's a win-win, and it's helping with infrastructure. I think that's the biggest thing, it's an infrastructure enhancement, and that's very similar to what we did with Auto Mall and the Galleria.
Councilmember Mendonza.
I just wanted to point out, he's got lost in the presentation, it's kinda cool, I did some research, you know, not every, most Costcos have fuel stations, but not all of them have car washes, and we've seen this on a couple of different proposals on the West Side over the years. We had a fast food restaurant that had its first drive-through, is one of its chains that opened up out there, and the fact that this has a car wash is really cool, it's nice because there's not one out here in this region, and it just makes that one a little more unique, so I thought it was really cool that that was an added feature aside from the fuel station and, of course, the large footprint that Costco brings with it. I guess that's my cue to move on, so, thank you, Mayor.
It's done.
Yeah, I had nothing to do there. Councilman Albert.
You know, I know this was a really long and complex process, and Nick, thanks for your patience, because I know I bugged you a lot. On behalf of the residents of West Roseville, thank you. This is such a great quality-of-life improvement for the people on the West Side who have to go into town to get anything, and so this is just really, really exciting. I know the residents are gonna be just super jazzed. Also, I need to mention from a legal perspective here that before I vote, I want the record to reflect that although my 2022 Form 700 states that I own Costco stock in the range of $2,000 to $10,000, I have, since that filing disposed of the majority of my Costco stock, so it's now under that $2,000 limit that would be a conflict of interest, so I just wanna make sure that was on the record, so...
Thanks for that. Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Well, I remember meeting with you, I think, last year, year before, and I just wanna thank you for your patience, the creativity that staff has had, I think that there are so many illustrations in our city's history that we take calculated risks, and it pays off for our residents and our businesses, so I believe our entire community will be excited about that, this, and welcome to Roseville.
Yeah, and I'm gonna pick up on that, and, you know, having, living along Roseville Parkway, which is the retail commercial corridor which the West Side comes to visit, when you open, and maybe on the West Side, it'll be a benefit to those on the East Side, because we will see less traffic, so this is a benefit to all of Roseville, and as soon as you can get a Home Depot or other stores out there, there'll be hopefully less traffic, so it's a benefit to everybody in Roseville. And with that, I think we're ready for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 10.3, the city council will consider adopting Resolution Number 23-190, approving a City of Roseville Economic Development Incentive Agreement by and between the City of Roseville and Costco Wholesale Corporation, and authorizing the city manager to execute it on behalf of the City of Roseville, and adopting Ordinance Number 6557, ordinance of the city, of the council of the City of Roseville authorizing certain amendments to the fiscal year 2022-23 budget, and declaring this ordinance to be immediately effective as an appropriation measure. At this time, may I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second, we'll start off with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rukucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haudashell.
Yes.
Thank you.
I was gonna say, gross, what did you do?
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, we're doing pretty good. Next up is ordinances and salary schedule for city council-appointed positions and city manager and city attorney employment and personnel services agreements, and we're joined by our human resources director, Stacy Peterson.
Good evening. I'm Stacy Peterson, Human Resources Director, pleased to be here, Mayor Haudashell, and council members. I'm here to present item 11.1, to be transparent in accordance with the government code, which requires executive salaries to be presented for open discussion. The city council recently completed the annual performance review for the city manager, Dom Casey, who is responsible for leading a full-service complex city, including four utilities, and overseeing a budget of over $780 million. After the review, staff was directed to prepare a new five-year contract. In addition, city council also completed the annual performance review for city attorney Michelle Scheidenberger, and staff was directed to amend the city attorney's contract. As part of the review process, a total compensation study was conducted, and a 7% salary adjustment is recommended, and an additional 2% city contribution toward the deferred compensation plan was recommended for both the city attorney and city manager. In addition, a $200 per month increase was recommended for the auto allowance for the new contract for the city manager. Overall, the total annual cost of these compensation and benefit changes will be $77,235 annually, which will be included in the fiscal year 23-24 budget. The current budget can absorb the additional costs for this fiscal year. Staff recommends that the city council adopt an ordinance to approve the attached City Council Appointed Positions Updated Salary Schedule effective May 20 of 2023, and adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the First Amendment to the Employment and Personal Services Agreement between the City of Roseville and Michelle Scheidenberger, and adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the new employment and personal services agreement between the City of Roseville and Dominic Casey. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, Councilmember Albert, any questions?
So in this agreement, we have, I think, when it comes to median, one is a little below and one's a little above, and I just wanted to ask, does our city manager have the highest salary in the city?
In the city, no. So our electric utility director has a higher salary.
Just wanted the public to be aware of that, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Bernusconi, any questions?
No questions.
All right, Councilwoman Rukucci, any questions?
No questions.
Councilmember Mendonza, any questions?
No questions.
I don't have any questions, I'll open it for public comment. We'll close public comment, bring it back to the council for comment. Any final comments before we act?
I know that in this salary increase for both of our appointees, there was an evaluation that was included, and it was, I would guess, I mean, I want you guys to speak for yourselves, but for me, it was a joy to sit in there and just listen to the comments by the other council members about the quality of service that you give to the city and your departments, with our city attorney over the legal department and protecting our city, and so many things that that department does, and our city manager working us through the different negotiations and all the different challenges, and I know we have just been very impressed, and the comments that came out of our group was very high praise for you guys, so I just wanted to make sure we said that, that we're very pleased with your performance, and that came out in your performance evaluations.
Any other comments? I'm just gonna say that, you know, recently, we've seen some city managers change positions, going to Auburn, going to Tulumis, you know, a skilled executive team, and I won't limit that to the city manager or the city attorney, is highly coveted throughout California because of the complexity of regulations and complexity of things like budgets, and to have the continuity of the executive of both the city manager and the city attorney guiding a very skilled team in a very collaborative way is a real, yeah, we couldn't do, we couldn't serve the community as well as we do without that, and so I'm ready for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 11.1, the city council will consider adopting ordinance number 6654, amending ordinance number 6481, the salary ordinance for city council-appointed positions as amended by Appendix Q to be effective May 20, 2023, as an urgency measure, and adopting Resolution Number 23-173, approving a First Amendment to Employment and Personnel Services Agreement between City of Roseville and Michelle Scheidenberger, and authorizing the mayor to execute it on behalf of the City of Roseville, and adopting Resolution Number 23-174, approving an employment and personal services agreement between the City of Roseville and Dominic Casey, and authorizing the mayor to execute it on behalf of the City of Roseville. At this time, may I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second, we'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rukucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haudashell.
Absolutely, yes, thank you.
Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Yep, all right, well, we've come to the point where we will open for a second opportunity for public comment on non-agenda items. Seeing none, I'll bring it back, and I'll ask the city manager if he has anything else to bring to us tonight.
Normally, I would say no further reports, Mayor, but I just, I have to comment, what an agenda tonight, I think, on there with not only the Roseville Parkway extension moving forward as a result of tonight's vote, it's a huge, huge project. There's something on consent, and I want to take an opportunity to thank Sean Bigley, our assistant environmental utilities director, that's a mouthful, our water rights, where we negotiated 10% additional rights, which serves about 20,000 households, very, very big deal, and, of course, the Costco agreement there on Baseline Marketplace and moving that forward, which is just a huge benefit to the entire city, and I just want to thank you also as part of the evaluation process and contract, I can't believe five years has went so fast, but it has, but I do want to thank you for the trust and support and guidance that you continue to show and give me, and thank you, and thank our staff and our community for that support as we move forward, so thank you.
You're welcome. City attorney?
I have nothing to say other than echo what Dom just said.
All right, so let's, we come to the point in our agenda where we will do council reports, Councilwoman Rukucci, let's start with you.
I'll echo what the city manager says, this meeting was just full of life, they never stopped, I mean, from the Costco, even in the grants, and all the grants of different kinds that are helping our community, and with the housing, I mean, it just went on and on, and the reports of where we are and the stability in our electric and water departments. I'm just gonna say a couple things, and there's so many that I'm not even gonna, and a lot of us with the same things, but a lot of things we've been doing lately are just really community-oriented, and a lot of good people, they've been helped. The stand-down occurred recently, last week, and what it is, is an opportunity for veterans to get, come to the grounds and get free health and medical services, dental, and also it's a camaraderie of seeing veterans, and I volunteered and worked there, and it was real interesting to see younger veterans talking to the older ones and making jokes and just enjoying each other's company, but it also had a lot of opportunities that you could get legal aid, legal information, housing, and then just kind of fun things. They had, if you had a dog, you can take it to the vet, and they could check it and give it injections if it needed it, haircuts for people, so, and meals, and most of these people drove cars there and lived around here, but there were a few that were homeless, and they were housed there, and they're very appreciative of being able to do that and take part in those services. And I, let's see, one other thing, Hearts for Heroes, this was something that was a fundraiser for helping getting service dogs to groups, and this, and one of the groups are to the fire departments. I'm familiar with service dogs in a hospital setting, that people who raise their dog, they'd come in and bring it to see the patients, and it was very well-received, not only for the patients, the staff, and it was really a morale builder, and for my patients, it just, just a few moments that they're not thinking about what brought them to the hospital. And this is when you look at, this could be something that could be used for fire departments after they got on a call that was pretty emotionally draining, to come back and there's some, you know, I won't say Fido next to you, this Fido is a lapradoodle, so he's a big, and, but it was interesting, and not only did they do that, they honored some of our firefighters who made, worked in a dramatic rescue of saving a drowning young little boy, and how they did it, I thought, was really great. It's from the time that the dispatcher got the information, and they had the dispatcher there, they had a firefighter that was from Citrus Heights that heard the call and came there, and all the other firefighters that were there, and made it happen, and still follow with the mom, the mom was there, and talking about what it meant to her, so it was how good our fire department is, that was great. There's other things, but that's good, I left you guys here, one other thing, I went on, well, go ahead, oh, went on an ACTOR, I haven't been on one for a few years, it's called Placer County ACTOR, Councilmember Albert also went, it was an opportunity to be in Penrin area and see two different farms, I think one was like 20 acres and the other one was, no, 50 acres, I think the other one's 80, and most of them were nuts, and also they, almond trees, but they also made changes depending on how the weather is, and I could never, you know, it's bad enough to figure out how you're gonna drive in Roseville, or what you're gonna wear, or how your plants are, but how you make an income, and because your plants just got fried... you make an income, and, and because your plants just got frosted, you know? So it's like, very interesting, and it's still a high quality of feeding people in our area and also in the United States. Moneymaker as far as a job, very difficult, a very hard job, and the, and the people that we saw, these are, were fourth and fifth generation families that it was passed on. You know, this is a, a job of love, farming of love. You have to love it, or you wouldn't be doing it. But it's, it was, it was just really touching to see that, and what they've done to be diversified in, in our economy, and also just being a, a good neighbor to residents around them, and a real asset to Placer County. It was, and so it was, it was, it was fun.
I was able to attend a couple of events recently, but I am going to wait, because I know that one in particular, the mayor will want to share, so I don't want to steal his thunder, so I will.
I don't know what that one is, so you better write me a note.
I'm going to pass on my comments and just say thank you.
Councilmember Albert.
A couple I wanted to mention was Fire Station 9 had an opening, and this is on the western side of Roseville in the Fittment Farm neighborhood area. And they, they did one on a Sunday afternoon with a little bit different time than normal, usually they do them Saturday mornings, and it was very well attended. It was really odd to me, though, that it's clear that the average age of our fire department has dropped significantly. I think it's down to like eight years old. There were so many kids running around in full turnouts and saying they were firemen, and it was fun, lots of smiles, the staff are just fantastic, teaching safety and letting them use the hose and taking them all through the fire trucks and stuff, just letting them look at all the fun stuff. It was, it was really fun to just sit back and kind of watch it, so thank you to the fire department for, for being a nice, fun resource for our community and engaging with our children. And then today, Vice Mayor and Councilman Mendonza and I went to the Roseville, the Pride of Roseville Awards, and I thought it was just very uplifting to be there. You know, this, this city's a great city. You know, council members have a little bit, but really, it's our staff. Our staff are so fantastic, and they have such a great culture. And being in the awards banquet, just listening to the, the things that they're getting awarded for, and the smiles, and there was a ton of people in there, too, and Krista gave a nice speech. And I just, it was just heartwarming, and on behalf of the community, I just really want to thank all the employees of Roseville and the managers over that. You guys have a wonderful culture here, and we know that, that you're the, the gold behind all the wonderful things that happen in our city, so we thank you very much for that service, so, it was fun.
All right, good evening, thank you. Well, just to, what Dom said about covering so much this evening, you know, from, we talked about housing development, certainly part of our reach, and our grants we were able to give, discussion of our utilities, but maybe the most important thing, and I want to congratulate our mayor, is he was able to give a proclamation for Craft Brew Week. So if you've done nothing else, that's, that's very impressive, and I know that.
Ash has got nothing on Craft Brew Week, all right?
I probably just stand between you and something very cold to drink, so congratulations on doing that, very clever. Just want to offer a congratulations to our city attorney and our city manager. We did go through a lengthy process evaluation, and I'm really so impressed with our leadership here, and it really does start with our city manager and our city attorney. We are lucky to have them both, and congratulations, and we look forward to many more years of working together. Scott mentioned our Roseville Pride event, saw many of you earlier today, really with the, kind of the rock stars in our community. I was able to attend this morning the unveiling of the Fallen Deputy's Memorial for Placer County, deputies who were lost or killed in the line of service dating back, I think it was 100 years ago, just about, and, and the latest one was in 2014. Each of them, there was probably seven who were, all of them who were acknowledged, they all had family members there, even distant. And it was really touching, the artist, the sculptor was Doug Van Houd, who was, used to be a part of Reagan's administration, and the, our Placer Sheriff's Office did a fantastic job. And I do believe, you think that you said that it was on YouTube, so if you get a chance, it's emotional and long overdue. Monday, on behalf of the council, I was able to attend the Roseville City School District Foundation's golf tournament. I was able, they were out of bullets, so they did not have a shotgun start, but they had a really great time, a fantastic fundraiser for our K through eight students, all of whom benefit from the foundation in enrichment programs. I will miss our first meeting in June, June 7th. It's the GSAC Retreat, which I am now on the board for that. We were all at their annual celebration last week, and the retreat is the 7th and the 8th with their board. It's really, I think, important that we all are there, so I will not be there. I can't remember the last time I missed a meeting, but I will also miss the soccer complex groundbreaking, I think, which is coming up quickly, that's that Thursday. So that's where I will be. I will see you later in June, and that's all I have for tonight.
Yeah, no, and just picking up on a couple of things, right? So the Pride of Roseville's nominated by their peers, so, you know, they're valued, you know, they're highly regarded by their peers, and so I appreciate folks being there. I had intended to be there, but duty called today. And congratulations on the GSAC Award for the Growth Factory, so congratulations, Melissa. Melissa and I are going to have a conversation next week with a chef from, from Sacramento who really kind of covets this area and is friends with Patricio Wise over at Nick's Tacos, so maybe we'll be able to draw, draw a new, you know, Michelin rated restaurant chef to this area. Tomorrow, I'll be doing the closing comments for Leadership Roseville. Tomorrow, I'll also be doing SECOG, Board of Directors, and then, and then next week is PCTPA. As you mentioned, shotguns, I guess I created quite a stir at the Mayor's Cup when I, when the shotgun start went off, because I was in there on Monday getting cleats for my golf shoes, and they were saying, yeah, we were telling people, you know, watch out, this is going to sound really loud, and they were saying, and the mayor, and I was like, you're talking about the mayor? And they said, yeah, oh, you're the mayor. And I said, yeah. Anyway, it was a terrific day, and I was joined by all of my colleagues at various parts in the day, you know, Councilman Albert and Councilwoman Kuci in the morning, and then you, you had a commitment, otherwise you would have been there, because you did two of these already, so. And Councilmember Mendonza and I came in the evening with Councilwoman Kuci. It was perfect Monterey weather.
Yes.
You know, I mean, a little wind, a little clouds. It was at Diamond Oaks, which celebrated its 60th anniversary, and heard a lot of great things about the course, and it raised money, as it always does every year, for scholarships for our athletic, our Parks and Rec program and, and underserved communities. So it was a really enjoyable day, and the wind held off, and the sun stayed behind the clouds, and, and all I needed to do is work on my golf game, so. And with that, I think we're done. We'll miss you on June 7th, but look, but we'll, we'll ask you to summarize the budget for us, that comes out this Friday, all right? And that'll be your, that'll be your, your homework assignment. But with that, thanks, everybody, for, I had us for 9:30, and we managed to get done well before that, so thank you. Well, I think we are, so thanks. With that, I'm going to gabble us close. We'll see you on the 7th.